Item number F, considering act upon authorized use of credit card reader. Use for collecting warrants in the fines.
We want to find ways for the officers to be able to collect, to help them collect the warrants that are outstanding. He suggests the square card reader for the cell phone they carry so they can take credit cards when they're out. Their other option is to take, not take cash, but take it to a place that can get a money order and pay with a money order. But we believe having that option of credit, it's been real helpful in court for people to be able to pay with a credit card. And we thought that we might use this for the officers. It's a flat 2.75 percent every time it's swiped. So whatever they...
With the city's portion?
The city, yeah. The city will have to pay that.
People's debt.
Mm-hmm. So in, in, in the court, we do add a, we're allowed to add a 5 percent fee. We, we handle that by making it a flat fee and make sure we don't charge it, charge that fee on anything that's under eighty dollars so we don't go over the 5 percent percentage rate that we're allowed. But I think in the case of this, it might be easier to just, the city to pay it out of what we're collecting. Hopefully we can get it. Might help us get it. Rather than add, I guess the officers could add, you know, take time to figure out the percentage and add it on there, but I think we'll be doing it to collect the fines and fees that they owe because generally when they are borrowing, it's a pretty good chunk of money.
If we decide, we decide later or two, add 5 percent.
You can do that.
How does work with just one phone?
Well, whoever's going out can take that phone, that cell phone. I've offered mine too, but we only, you know, one officer going at a time, whoever's going.
You make other phones?
They probably would need the city's phone set up. But Margie's experienced with it. She's got experience.
There's an app that goes all this phone and that app is then tied into the bank account. So when it's swiped, it's going to automatically go to, to that bank account. The problem is if you have everybody's phone, then you've given out the bank information to, to everybody's phone and then that's, you've lost your...
Yeah, I've, I've offered mine and some of mine have for the city for them to, to tie to that.
Susan's, I can see, because hers is a city phone as well, but I mean, I wouldn't put it on.
So just use that city phone when they go out?
Right, because most people are calling me on my personal phone.
Well, you need that phone though when you do court though.
Uh, no.
Oh, when they bring in their...
She has a card machine here.
Oh, okay, okay.
They just need that for when they're out. If they bring them in and we're here, we'll rather do that and charge them.
Gotcha.
So...
I'll make a motion that we delay it and get the square card, uh, credit card reader for the police department to use for collecting the warrants.
Motion for, the purchase of square card reader by Captain Wodzinski and second by Captain Paul. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion here and dismissed. Item G, considering act from Tandar Road Police Officers fifty dollar warrant fee upon execution and receipt of payment of warrant fee.
The fifty dollar fee is a fee that's added when a warrant's issued. In order to collect the fee, it has to be processed or executed in some way. By that, it means like phone calls or attempts to collect it or actual collection by executing it. There is a law that says any other police department that may execute a warrant that's with Tandar Road, if they notify us within fifteen days, we have to send them the warrant fee. But what we're asking for here is if these officers go out and they have a list of warrants that's issued to them to collect on and they take notes, you know, we have proof there of ones that are processing them, making calls on them or whatever, then when and if that is collected and paid, they'll get paid that fifty dollars, uh, warrant fee. If it just comes through Omni or it's one that comes in that they have, Roman has had any notes of processing or anything, then the city just keeps it, but allows them to have that fifty dollar stuff.
Didn't we have this already?
We had that in play a while back, but I didn't know if y'all had changed or anything. So I'd like to have a motion on it if you will.
And will they be using their personal vehicles to do these warrants or will they...
I guess we have to work those details out. We only have two vehicles here. I mean, they're gonna need some way to go to do that and we'll get with Ralph and with the chief and the different officers and see what...
Do they have radio, I mean, regular police radios with them, don't they?
Well, they, units, units, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we pay the police officer fifty dollars of warrant fee for execution of payment of warrant.
Motion for, Captain Carter, to collect fifty dollar warrant fee and second by Captain Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion here and dismissed.
Considering act on influence program for the Tandar Road Police Department, pilot
enhanced enforcement program, EEP.
You want to explain that for me?
Okay. hours per month without pay to keep their license. So the chief was looking at this and he was trying to come up with something here to increase their hours where they could work even more hours, but with pay. And the hourly rate would be basically on a full-time officer, current pay at a rate of eight hours per shift, across the city, a hundred and forty dollars plus gasoline. Susan, is, this, the way I read it, this is over the sixteen hours?
Yeah, they...
Per sixteen hours?
The sixteen hours, they work non-paid period. If they want to come in four hours or eight hours, it's an incentive to increase in full of law enforcement here and they would be paid for that time, whatever it is offered to them.
Okay. I, I looked at this and I feel like we might be getting a little out of hand over budget getting involved in this. We've got eight reserve officers, sixteen hours. I think this might be getting a little more.
I'm just wondering what the estimate of the hours that the police come to work?
You mean the extra hours, the sixteen hours?
Four hours a month or...
No, that would be regulated by the chief if it were to be approved. And I think what he's asking for is a three-month pilot program to see how it works. He believes it would more than likely pay for itself with their enforcement of laws. So it helps to increase the opportunity to have them here in the city working, enforcing laws and it would also give them an incentive by obtaining for that extra time they're here. It wouldn't be unlimited or just any time they wanted to, it would be regulated.
Do we know what approximate number of hours or that he's looking at a month?
Yeah, I don't have that from him and, you know, you may want to talk to him about that. I don't know that exactly. I know that it's not, you know, there would be, it would be limited and offered to, you know, officers.
We have eight active reserve officers right now and sixteen hours for each one, which is a hundred and twenty-eight hours. They work what per, what is it, sixteen?
Sixteen hours a month.
Per month? Okay, per month. So that's a hundred and twenty-eight hours per month. And we don't have enough of those to go around to, so we don't have, we don't, they can't work. Those hundred and twenty-eight hours a month between all of them, so we don't have to, you know what I'm saying, to pay one of them or over than, than another one?
It was just like it said, an incentive program.
Yeah. Well, I don't think it's a bad thing, but under the circumstances, we're just getting back on our feet, Susan, from, you know, from a fall and the city is needing other things. I, I don't object to it, but right now, I don't think it's the time to do that. That's just my personal opinion. I think we can try to use money in other areas. I know one of our, our main things is trying to get you guys a better marquee and I know those are expensive and I would rather try to put something like that for the city at this time. I, I think with these reserve officers, we're very blessed to have so many of them that they should try, if, if the chief could figure out where they could all work, where within that one hundred and twenty-eight hours, by, they should have enough coverage. That's just how I feel.
Well, we will pass that on to him.
I, I just want to make a comment that I'd like to know what the estimate of the cost, you know, that he might have on this.
So do y'all want to table it or talk to him? Because I don't really know that. I do ask him whether he'd like for that.
Get us, get us more of a schedule of what he, how much, would he...
How much it would affect the budget.
Would affect, and, and you know, how many hours he thinks he, he's going to use these eight reserves in order to fill in the times that Officer Labricus isn't working.
Because I think, are, are we like, like, we could over our budget on the police department? Are we on target or where are we at with our paid officers?
Our budget, we're on target right now. You know, but I do watch it. I check it very often to make sure, you know...
It's only because of the debt we had to inquire with the lawyers that we had and we've just had so much negativity that has brought us down in our budget and we're just now actually making money with the courts. I just think, I, I just would like to table it for now or either...
I'd resolve it. I just can't see it either with the, at least two police officers, the forty hour, eighty hours a week, if she says a hundred and twenty-eight hours. I don't see any, put any more in there. So I, I'd like to make a motion to, to drop this off the agenda.
At this time, maybe we could be, look at it further down in two years or a year or so.
So you have two motions?
I'll, I'll second him.
Can I second his motion?
Yep.
Okay. I have a motion to, um, drop it.
Okay, our motion denied.
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 Yeah, second by Captain Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none.
Okay, so we have two, one.
Two.
Okay, the motion.
Motion denied.
No, the motion is denied. The motion denied is approved.
Moving on, item aye, considering act for ordinance one five zero three zero five, setting a speed limit on Tera Bonita Street using existing posts for all orange of speed bumps on both ends of Tera Bonita.
I have a concern about the traffic on, since we've got our updated roads, I know they're not, there's going to be some more work done on them to get them a little bit better, but we had the speed bumps taken out and Tera Bonita has become like a little, feels pretty good, going fifty miles an hour, all those roads, no speed bumps, no holes and people are taking advantage of it. Not that they followed the speed limit before, some people do, but unfortunately we have a lot of traffic that comes down in Tera Nueva and several different, couple of cars that just go over, I know it has to be fifty or more miles an hour, just, you know. So I think we need to, since our speed bumps are taken away, I think we need to lower our speed limit and maybe, you know, if there's twenty-five miles an hour and they go thirty or forty miles an hour and somebody, we have our police officers there in our area, which they control quite a bit, stop them a few times, maybe they'll get the hint, you know? It is twenty-five miles an hour, they pay a fine, they'll learn how to slow down then. But it's just the safety. We still have small children down Tera Bonita. Matter of fact, a new family just moved in at Jordan with two children that ride bikes on their circle driveway and into the street. And it's a safety. It's more of a safety reason as why I'm requesting this. So that's what that's about. Now, we have the existing holes from the speed bump sign, but we, we don't have a speed limit sign from best I can recall, and I didn't double check, down at the other end by Tera Nueva, I don't know if you've ever recalled. We only have one that's posted right when you go in and if you don't look fast enough, you'll miss it. So it needs to be...
What is it?
It's thirty, 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 yeah. And I'm proposing to bring it down to five.
Twenty.
I mean, to twenty. It's thirty, we want to bring it to twenty and maybe we can get twenty-five out of them.
Alex, you said there's only one.
Mm-hmm.
There's the ord, there is an ordinance that there should be one at Tera Bonita, Tera Mesa at twenty miles per hour and one at Tera Bonita at fifteen, sixteen, at thirty, at thirty.
I'm only seeing one right when you go in, right?
There's only one that's at thirty and that's in that first...
Right when you turn into the subdivision.
So what this ordinance is proposing is between miles per hour on all of Tera Bonita and post two, you were saying put up two?
At least, so down at that other end. I don't know if your area needs anything with their margin, because it's not, it's kind of shorter streets.
Shorter than it turns.
Yeah, but Tera Nueva is a long street and of course Tera Bonita is the main street.
Well, I can see putting one at this end and one at the other.
Because of that break.
Exactly.
That's what it is. That's what there is, but changing the limit.
The, the speed limit, when you go into Tera Bonita?
Is thirty.
If you, if you turn left, it's still thirty, right? So if we put twenty, it's...
But, but it's hard to go thirty.
I know, I mean, I'm saying that, that is the speed limit when it says there until it changes.
Until it changes, yeah.
So actually we'll have twenty everywhere in Tera Bonita.
Are you planning on changing the one at the beginning?
Yes.
That's what I was saying. But this is guaranteed that we'll put twenty.
Only Tera Bonita will be twenty miles per hour.
Yeah. And then Tera Bonita, you're, on Tera Bonita, you're twenty miles an hour, all the way down and all the way down.
And we know that everybody who has a problem with that, they're probably going here to take it to thirty, but, you know, go back to like, and thirty is twenty-eight, twenty-six, that's the same.
They just need to slow down and maybe these new signs are up and maybe we get our officers there right afterwards to kind of reinforce some of that.
Is it at the workout hours or something?
Uh, I've noticed in the morning, in the, yeah, in the mornings and then like towards five or thirty, that's when you see, there's one little white car, I wasn't able to get the, what's it called, I'm surprised, but it's just ridiculous. I mean, that little black car is fast.
Susan, I have a couple things. One, what happened to the old bus?
They were brought, where did they go? From the back. I was gonna say, I thought they were brought up here, but I can't, I don't remember seeing them.
Most of the residents didn't want them back.
They're not any good.
They're not any good?
They were coming up and they made holes.
Flattened out. They're flattened out and done the other day. The only thing that's still up are the signs, the caution signs, I think, and the warning signs of the speed bumps ahead, so...
Do we have to have a traffic survey in order to do this legally, where they can get a ticket that'll hold up in court?
An engineer study?
Right.
Uh, probably.
We change them in court, change them on court anyway.
Yeah, but it, it could be, it could be tested in court. They never have been, they have never been, but it is a possibility.
Because the residential is normally thirty?
Well, there's, there's state law too on what it is if there is no sign. They, they do have a code from the, the criminal code, traffic code, that there is a...
What is?
I can, I heard.
Do you know what it is? What's residential?
The traffic code, the transportation.
Transportation code.
Yes, but we call it the traffic code, I'm sorry. It's the transportation code.
Text, text that, puts it out.
I was just curious, I, if it's like in a residential area, areas, it's usually thirty? Is that usually the...
Well, we got over thirty. What they do is that.
Yeah, I've been at this house before.
No, it's thirty.
If it's not posted, it's thirty. That's why we need to post it at twenty and maybe we can slow these people down.
Tuesday, okay.
When you turn the speed bumps, like I said, you'll have a positive divide to show the company.
The last time we had, those speed bumps, we had last time, half the time they were coming up, the holes in them, I mean, they, to me, it was more of a nuisance, those speed bumps. It helped, well, they were brand new.
Maybe we just need to just attach a speed bump to them.
They work. They work.
They fly over those too, Mr. Mahal?
We, there were a lot of complaints to the speed bumps for putting in, the people that lived there did not like it. It evidently, when the cars would come, they would slow down and then hit the bumps and it made a lot of noise and a lot of...
It got something in the back of the pickup, bounces around. A lot of, a lot of people don't like them and like you said, there is a percentage of people that go faster. They figure, they figure that a speed bump, speed up and you go over them faster, you don't hit it.
I think if we had bought those, they were like many years ago, they were like four thousand dollars or something.
Well, I just thought it'd be an easy fix by lowering the speed limit, make new, the two new signs and it maybe catch their attention and with the controlling of the officers occasionally through there, they can say, do go through our subdivision, I see the cars, I mean, the fellows, that maybe it would help.
How much is one of the radar signs cost? Your screen is this.
I don't know. We have to purchase one of those.
So anyway, well, I'd like to make a motion that we can, that we would approve the ordinance. Can we use this ordinance then?
No.
Huh?
If you want to.
Yeah, I mean, is that, I want to consider an act to approve ordinance one five zero three oh five, setting a speed limit on Tera Bonita just at twenty miles an hour, using the existing poles that are up there, that we have, the post, so that would be less cost to the city. We just need the signs.
This would be for the whole street?
Just Tera, yes, the beginning and the end. But when you first, I mean, for the whole subdivision? Oh, it would consider all, all the subdivision, those holes?
I'm, I'm not sure if it will do that, because once you turn, are they still going by the same speed limit? Like if they're going down one street and turn and it doesn't change, it's still that twenty?
So would do the whole subdivision?
Can we buy the other sign unless posted, you go twenty miles an hour? Like having wind chutes?
Oh, do the whole city in wind, wind chutes?
You still have to have the same amount of signs.
Oh, right, the sign that says...
You have to say the same amount of signs, because you have to put them all in different places.
Yeah. I would say just two, buy two twenty, and we may have one, we have some extra ones when they come down and stuff in the pot, but at the most would be buying two twenty mile per hour signs.
At the beginning.
At the beginning, when you go in and when you change, go past Tera Mesa, the second block of Tera Bonita, right?
Yes. And then if, will we put one down at the end by Tera Nueva? That's where we need one.
Well, there's the speed bump.
Where that speed bump is coming back.
Coming back, you could put one coming back up.
Yes, this way, okay. That's what, both ways. Yeah, you want both ways.
So we, we have the poles, we don't have to worry about poles going to the side. I'll, I'll second the motion.
I'll second the motion by Captain Paul, and we'll end segment. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion here. Item J, Detective Ryan for order position on ballot.
I had, I had to prepare this agenda to go either way, so that's why we see the...
So it's not, yeah, we don't need that. Go over that one.
We move item J, remove item K if we pass item N.
You do have your, you have the official, you have a copy of...
Oh, yes, yeah.
This is the official certification that candidates are all on the post and there's no positions or issues.
Is everybody ready for the ordinance one five zero three zero five E?
I have it. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance one five two three oh five dash E.
Motion for to adopt ordinance one five zero three zero five by Captain Paul.
Can you read that ordinance title?
Read the whole ordinance.
Title?
Ordinance number one five zero three zero five dash E, an ordinance canceling the May ninth, two thousand and fifteen general election and declaring each unopposed candidate elected to office, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances, providing a survivability clause and providing an effective date. Whereas the city of Tandar Road is a day general.
No, just the title is good.
Okay.
You'll have to second if she's on the ticket.
I'll second it. I'll second it for the proposed ordinance fifteen, one five, fifteen oh three oh five E.
We have a second by Captain Paul.
You're playing.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none. Motion here. Item N, considering act on for no a certificated five or six months of Randolph Brooks, Federal Caribbean, which matures on March tenth, two thousand and fifteen.
It's in savings right now, what, I think what?
It's in, it's in, yeah, it's in a CD right now. It matures.
Okay, this is...
And you could renew it as a six month or a year and based on the interest rates. I, I could call and check.
Is the money removed?
I know, it's not a whole lot different. A year might be a little bit more.
It might be a little bit, but I'm not sure.
Do we, do we, we don't need to update the road?
That's what we're saying, that's the other thing you'll have to consider is if you pay before six months is out, if before a year is out, would you be, would you be starting next phase of the road repairs?
I'd like to make a motion that we do it at six months unless the interest rate is point three oh or something higher.
Susan, this money doesn't, won't be tied up or needed. This particular amount.
That's what we were saying. That's why he's proposing like a six month in case y'all do need it. Next phase of road repairs comes up. We're okay to finish paying for...
The second phase will be coming up after they finish these up.
Yeah, for a year now, so the six months.
Yeah, that's what my concern was, thank you.
Can we get to one percent?
I don't know, I'll check and see what the benefit that we can give.
Okay, I'll second the, it's a habit six months. CD Randolph Brooks.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that unless, you know, convention, you're...
You want to...
Or bend down a point.
You want to, you want me to call somebody and let y'all, let somebody know what it is? You want to make your motion? It's not going to be enough.
I was gonna say... I was gonna say, is it going to be that?
Let's just, let me just make a motion to do it.
And motion forward to renew the certificate of runoff route for six months at whatever percent we get and the second by Councilman Paul. And all the favors say aye? All opposed? Motion here. Any other questions, please? Nelson?
Well, I, I guess I should, should be hoping to report on that meeting with the county commissioners that I went to.
Yeah, if you want.
Mayor Rips had me go to a meeting of, it was either the mayors or the city administrators or whatever of the municipalities in Bear County with Nelson Wolf, our county commissioner. And basically, they were going over a few of the proposals they have going on, out two eighty-one and sixteen oh four and various places all on our side. But there was a couple of things that they did bring up that they're discussing, possibly trying to see if the cities need to come together in purchasing power for office supplies, road products, you know, for some of the cities like Tera Hills, Alamo Heights, they have their own road crews, you know. But it was to help, you know, with the purchasing powers and, um, that was about it. It was, it was about the only thing that really would affect us possibly in general, I think.
One of the things, it's emails from county now on the legislation that they're proposing to the state legislature from the county on the variety of things.
Yes, there, there is also a proposal on possibly rescinding how much we can go up on our property tax rate without having to put it to a vote, so.
It's like going from eight down to four percent that you have to vote. And there's also.
That's not a done deal yet.
No, this is, they, this is what the county commissioners have sent up to Austin trying to get things passed. There's a variety of election, uh, proposals, tax, and latest one they have out is commissioners' report on sweets in restaurants and everything else that they're trying to pass.
Thanks for going to that, Maje. They really, really insisted we send somebody.
It was like twenty-four or twenty-six?
I think it was a total of thirty and all, about twenty-six showed.
Yeah.
And then right at the end of the meeting, the fire alarm went off and we all had to evacuate.
If anybody's been downtown, they remodeled the Michigan court into the old, original court that they had as a mark in the old courthouse. It's really beautiful. It's still a bit upgraded too. Martin Thomas.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
And motion forward adjourn the meeting. And second, I'll, I'll, the favors say aye?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion here, Major Johnson. Eight, seven.